Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll call this meeting. Thanks for your honesty. Our ISD school, we're together tonight. And we'd like to welcome each and every one of you here.
And Marc?
You want to go with Richard first?
Okay, so if I'm all right with you, Richard is driving to Houston tonight at this meeting. So we'll go ahead and take care of that. And then we'll drive down to eight three, the eight four, which are action items. So that if you have a question on one of those, he might be able to answer that one.
Okay.
How about number five, Richard McDonald, sports design. Your own tape.
Thanks for having me again. We've got our bids in for, if you want to stand here, I'll follow over here. Got our bids in. We had, what was it, five bidders? Yep. It was pretty much the major players that we talked about in the turf building class. As far as the different type of, the major turf companies, major sports building companies in the state. The bids were all pretty much jumbled within a hundred thousand dollars, except the one which was pretty high. But I did talk to them. Their reason they were real high was they just have a company of work. And it wasn't, you know, if they were going to do it, they wanted to make sure they had a better profit on it. So that's pretty reasonable. The low bidder was a company called Hallis Construction. They're out of Austin, Texas. They're one of the major sports builders in the state. Currently probably have six or seven jobs with them. Over the last nine years, I've probably built thirty to forty tracks and fields with them. They're a very good company. It was one of the ones I approach liked as well. They're an all-inclusive company, meaning that everything is under their umbrella, except for the asphalt, which you'll have to hire a subcontractor for that. And it's pretty common because it's such a specific thing, asphalt paving. So it helps out as far as you only have to make one call if there's ever a problem or something with the one company. So it's a good standing company there. They came in, I think at one point, one, three, four million, which was under budget. And then they had some alternates as well for your consideration. And they also did add some value engineering, which I discussed with them, which doesn't put the quality of the job at risk by any means. So you obviously just probably taking those if you wanted to. So there's some savings there as well. And then they also offered to throw in, to redo your tennis courts, the surfacing there, which is a very good number to do that. Just kind of a little added extra bonus to be happy with the choice of them. Kind of if the board agrees, probably the next process would be to start the contract negotiation, get their bonds, and then probably next week or so, have a pre-construction meeting with them on site. And then work out the schedule with the districts, make sure that we're not getting in your guys' way, especially sports or anything. And then we turn the site over to them and let them go. And they could get probably done before graduation. That was going to be the goal.
Well, he's up here. I know there was a question about the drainage as far as for the city. And so my partner from the city council is here tonight. Our mayor, Lou, our man is here, and also Stan, wife, he has experience in water and he's been out to look at it. So I want to give him this opportunity to ask Richard any questions that that has about the track or about the drainage issue.
As a city council owner, we don't have a question. The other one was already over in our previous meetings. And at the time, the council voted that in the event there were enough discharge of water that there was probably a problem on the road over at the school, that's a little putting the water covered in the school fence. And, you know, that was the only item we looked at and voted at the city council on. Of course, the amount of water, we, no one can determine total amount, it's not a thing in front of them. But from my knowledge in the plumbing industry, I don't think it's going to be a major problem because it's going to be what I call a slow filtration media type system. You won't have probably as much water being discharged if you didn't want to keep it.
The field itself is a retention or detention system. And it does this thing called time of concentration, meaning to slow down the water or how quickly that water discharges into the watershed. That watershed that goes down, that gully there is enormous. If you actually look at the aerial photos, it will only 140,000 square feet. Our water footprint is quite small. And plus the fact when water hits that synthetic turf, it tends to vertically go through very quickly and then starts to move laterally to the drains. And water doesn't actually push out of there until more water impacts the surface. So it's like a screen door. The water holds in those squares. And then when you spray it, you know, that water goes through and then more water holds in that square. That's kind of how the field drains is it'll, it's called the perch water table, it actually holds the water. Then when more water hits it, it pushes it out. So basically, the time of concentration of our water is almost five hours till that field drains itself off. By then, the storm has passed. You know, the natural flow of all the watershed is passed as well. And then, you know, our system isn't really impacting. So it's actually a pretty efficient system. We actually use it on lots of other sites where we need extra retention and stuff. We can use that in the city's calculations to make sure that the watershed is going to work efficiently for the city and not overwhelm their storm systems down the stream.
Mike, I'll just speak up right quick. Initially, I was contacted by the school and the city. I went down and looked at it, looked at the situation, got back with the city. One of those culverts is in dire need of clean out, basically. But I was a little bit concerned. My first meeting with coach, when we just looked over the situation, we didn't have a blueprint, we didn't have drawing, we didn't have anything, basically. So just he and I down there talking and looking. And then I got a drawing or a blueprint, I guess, a week or so later, which did help. I was a little bit concerned about the ability to get that water off the field quickly. But as it's turned out, that wasn't going to be quite as big an issue as I thought.
The field itself will handle almost a two-inch event. If, like, if our pipe was completely clogged, it would have that much ability to fill up underneath the carpet before they're being backing up. But then, like I said, it's pushing and releasing as it's taking. Now, the field can get overwhelmed in excessive storms, large events that happen. Like, you know, this one happens like now, and then an hour later, you get another couple of inch event. It sure can back up and pass. What it does is just it floods a little bit, and then, you know, 10 minutes after the storm, it's gone.
This 12 collection basis that's located around the perimeter of the field, is that a solid number, so to speak? Is that number going to change or is it going to?
No, that's a pretty standard design.
Okay.
And basically, it's just, it's less than 150 feet between collectors. So there's a, water doesn't have to travel a long distance. So anything that impacts the carpet itself and drains 20 inches an hour, the turf and the field. So anything that hits the field will immediately go away. It's what hits the track and flows across the track, because that's a purpose surface. It'll go into that trench drain or into the field and goes away. So that's what those little catch basins are for.
Well, I don't have really much concern at all now, but, you know, there's always possibility. And, you know, my thought will mention it to the city council about the school maybe helping out if there was a problem. And of course, my comment to the city was, we're going to get that culvert cleaned out first before we make any kind of rash thought.
And they're not?
And that may not be the right way to look at it. But from the old country boy's thought process, I think the school and city ought to work together on things, especially on a situation like this. Because, you know, if it does cause a problem, say, let's just say this for play life, in September, October, November, we may get a four, five inch rain. And that's not uncommon in this area. I mean, we don't get them all the time, but I mean, we could get a three, four, five inch rain over a period of two, three hours if it happens. If it floods, the road, which it has not flooded in the last 10 or so years, I've been told. But just say for example, it did flood in November, December. In my mind, it'd be hard to prove that the field wasn't possibly a culprit because nothing else is going on across the road in that watershed area that we call it. And I'm not saying that.
No, not either. But you can quantify the field by your, by its footprint and by what that, through calculations of drainage helps, you know, that's a pretty standard theory. So I can always quantify that. Also, you know, if it's real nervous, we can always put a restrictor pipe on it so the field floods, you know, backs up. And then once the storm's gone, then the field releases. I mean, those things are common to put on as well. I've done that before. If, you know, if that's a big concern. But, you know, a restrictor valve is 200 bucks, you know, culverts are a lot more than that.
Well, I feel pretty good about now. I just didn't have all the details when I first looked into it. And probably been better if I maybe just kept my mouth shut till I got the copy. But I was pretty close. You know, I was calculating, I figured 14 to 16 drains. And wound up with 12 on this.
I sure don't want to, you know, we don't want to be the cause of any issues. But currently, the field is draining already. It's just slowed down by the soil. And we're slowing it down by underneath the cap treated through the area.
Well, Stan, let me clarify something. Are y'all saying there's two culverts there now?
Yes.
And if it drains, we'd need to put a third one in? Or?
If it flooded.
I mean, if it flooded, yeah. And so, Marc, what was that that you brought, that quote today that you brought?
I gave it to you, I think it was 1,400. Was it?
Was that?
Was it 1100?
I've got it, isn't it?
No, I gave it to you.
Let me go get that right quick. And it's not much. And that's what I wanted to bring up, is that if we were going to have it with them, it would be very, a very small amount. So let me go get it right quick.
I thought we were going to run a new drainage system from the, from the wall over there. Is that not true?
Yeah.
We are.
Well, but what about these two pipes that are still there? We need to clog, unclog one of them.
Those are on.
They talk about.
We're way down the road. The culvert, don't they?
Going underneath the hole?
Right, you go for it. On Birch Street.
On Birch Street.
Yeah. Okay. Jerry, they're just south of the urban park entrance where you go in.
Okay. But we're still going to drain into this, in this washery right out.
Right, right down 259.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Right there behind the lake.
And that's, it runs right through those two culverts.
Okay. And we are putting a new pipe all the way from the field.
To the edge of woods.
To, yeah, somewhere out there.
Basically.
The washery. Okay.
It was high minded when you had it to me. I think it has a difference on how the size of the culvert.
Size of the culvert.
Size of the culvert's the difference.
One of them's 36 and one of them's 48.
Okay, it's 1,480. And now it says labor's not included. So would that be, would the city do it or would?
I would imagine that the city would have to do the work, wouldn't you, Mike?
So I mean, I'm not saying I'm going to afford it.
Which way does the water flow? I thought it flew, flows across 259.
No.
It's going back on Birch Street.
Yeah. Birch Street down to the bottom.
Okay. I. I do think, and just speaking out of the, without the blessings of the whole city council, that we'd be real prone if this should happen, that we would furnish the labor and material fix the street and the school about the culvert.
Okay, so 1,500 dollars, you know, I think that's.
I mean, we're just looking at gifts, and I don't think this is going to be there.
I don't either. I feel pretty good that it will, my half. But in the event that it did.
Putting a river rap wall over construction at the end of it, I believe that'd break the water up even more.
It's really a lot of brush trees in there. It really slowed down a lot of the spring like our shoes.
But if the council, we get back, and the council comes back and says, we sent y'all with this proposal. We haven't had a meeting to say, no, forget, we're not going to do it that way. Don't have to vote.
We'll take the blessings of the council.
So none of which, y'all will have to agree that if it flooded, that we would pay this 1,480 to have another culvert?
Don't end this by a "ah."
Well, thank you, Stan. We just went ahead and did it. Just be proactive and go ahead and put it in place and have it, have it already done.
Again, since the road hasn't flooded in the last 10 years, at least that's what I've been told. I, you know, I go through that area quite often, but not after a big rain. But I really don't think that's necessary. I really don't. I mean, I feel, I feel.
The city is going to clean out the remainder of that other culvert. I don't believe we'll have a problem with that. And the blocked up culvert is the one going over to Birch Street?
Two sides.
Two, side by side, nearly. And it's over there by Birch Street, it's not by the playgrounds?
No.
Not at the playgrounds.
It's east of the playground.
All the watershed term makes down.
So if we sign the contract with the city, would we put that amount in? We can't just, we can't tie something that's an open-ended, no amount.
I can understand. I think all rest of it, we don't want something for another 20-year opening contract. I mean, we can put that amount in and give it time here for five years. Be true. I don't foresee it ever happening.
Well, we've been, we've been discharging that water out of the football field a long time. If we're not putting near the water out now, it would, you know, happen. And the watershed from up through the Walker Farm up in there and from the, coming all the way back from China Cafe, we'll be putting, what'd you say, 140,000 square feet of water? Versus, you know, telling them what that is, I don't have any idea. From the aerial photo, there was a lot of, a lot of watershed coming this way. But it's according to what the board wants to do.
And I believe the council will agree to that right there, if y'all agree to it in the next meeting, I think we'll be okay. I turn my charm on.
He's got a lot stored up, he doesn't use it at home.
Has anybody else got any questions here? McDonald, before we proceed on?
I think first you need to go ahead and approve Hallis, if you, you know, and then go to the, go with the council. That might be where you might have some questions, when you look over that for Richard before he leaves.
I do have some questions about the back page. They're not huge issues, and I think you pretty much said that they were the right thing to do. If we run out of money, with any one of them, I should take off. But do you want to do the Hallis first? Do you want to approve?
Yeah, why don't you start on eight three one and get that offer out of there.
I make a motion, we approve Hallis' our contract.
Mr. Congressman made a motion. Mr. Rollins, mayor's second. All in favor, ready to write in? All hands ready, motion prepared. Okay, Hallis is here.
So now if you look at eight four. Marc? Yeah, eight four. And this is on the scope of the project, and I think it's eight four two, that Jerry had some questions about it. And I felt better after I talked to Richard a few minutes ago about could Hallis come up with a lot of change orders that might cost us money in the long run. Richard, would you tell them exactly what you told us?
Earlier on, you guys have tried to do it with an RFP or RFQ, just a letter. It's really hard to get apples to apples on those types of, because you don't, there's no quantities in there, there's no quality of materials, no specifications as far as materials. But the plans and specifications, now everybody has been apples to apples, and they know, we know exactly what we're getting. So obviously, there can be some change orders. I'm going to say that doesn't ever happen. It's usually what you find is if there's bad soils, like a water line or something that just isn't showing up on the plans, it's buried down there. Once you get out of the dirt, it's basically just, you know, it's asphalt, rubberized surface, rock and turf. You know, there isn't rocket science after that. It's just, you know, the base is, is the big issue. So as far as change orders, those are pretty rare. They sure can happen, sure, but just with the plans and specs, it tends to eliminate most of that stuff. These guys are very experienced, you know, I've worked with them a lot. The plans are pretty advanced as far as just for sports. You know, we're not taking leaps and bounds here as far as anything that's real different than any other project that Hallis signed down together.
If you remember originally last fall, when we started working on this, we thought we could pick the request for proposals together. And then we found out real quickly that we needed an expert. And that's when we sought out Richard. And I feel much more confident and good about the specs that, of course, he has written up and what we put together here, so.
Is there anything we can do away with if money's an issue?
On page four. We got two. Well, the coach should throw his hat up here. Obviously, you know, if you wanted, didn't want to upgrade the track surface to a sealed system, you know, basic structural spray track's a very good track. Sealed system's just a better track. The synthetic turf, as far as being the 46 ounces out of 44, it's just, it's like when you buy a car, you know, better brakes, better chakras over, is that type of thing. It's a better, better ride. So it's the same thing with this. I don't, you know, the trench drain, I only need the trench drain 90, or you won't need it 99.999% of the time, but when that big rain happens, you're really glad to have it. You know, and a four-foot chain link fence, we're going to wipe out this field and build this beautiful, riding track and field, and you're going to have this whole kind of rusty fence. So it'd be nice if everything was nice and clean and smooth on the inside. And then as you guys may prepare some future, you know, like you're, you talk about field house and other concessions, years on the road, that stuff is all outside. That's just, so. And then, of course, the tennis courts was something they just threw in as a, as kind of a bonus. So it wouldn't actually be part of that sports, field and track project.
I'm concerned about two areas. One of them is, was it 20 mil liners instead of a 30 mil? Move the 30 mil.
I talked with Hallis who I talked quite a bit. The soils out there are, like I said, PIs, which is plasticity index, is like 13. Moderate soils are 20. Rest of Texas is 40 to 50. Beaumont's 80. You have extremely good soils, which is rare for Texas. You're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars, by the way, from what God gave you out there. So it's, it's a good thing there. So let's say the liner goes in 20 or a 10 mil, and it does get punctured, it's not going to risk your field because the water gets at that soil. There's just nothing, it just can't expand. Does that make sense? You know, the rest of Texas, water hits that soil, it swells, and then drought happens, it collapses. With yours, it's just, it's just going to sit there. And so. They're pretty careful about it. They build lots of 20 mil fields in those bad parts of Texas that never had any issues. So I feel pretty comfortable. The other thing they talked about was instead of, on our exit pipe, instead of shooting the pipe really deep, we're going to go shallower and then put a large catch basin, and we'll just drop the water vertically and then shoot out. So we don't trench deeper, and that saves them quite a bit of money.
Other area concerned is the retaining wall.
Right now, the retain, the field is, we're shifting it towards the field house, the possession, or the locker rooms. So we're staying off the wall. We're going to get close to it. There is a sink out there, you can see it in the track. So we'll do investigation there. As far as they know, that, and that'll be part of the pre-construction meeting, that we're just going to talk about. A lot of that's going to be handwork, small skid loaders, we're not going to use the big machines over there. We just, they don't.
But that's my concern.
That wall's very expensive.
Okay, so if that happens to the wall, when it collapses, then?
Then they're responsible.
And then who's, who's going to pay for it, for repair?
Obviously, if there's a engineering failure on the wall, but, you know, we've been looked at it, it hasn't moved, it's been there for.
659.
So it's extremely good shape. It could have used probably the painting on the outside, because it's already. But other than that, it's in pretty good shape. So if we do, redo the fence on there, that'll be something, probably pull the fence off and pour it on the inside edge of it, so we don't drill into it at all.
And Mike, we had actually talked to them about going ahead and putting the 30 mil liner in, and that value engineering would have just dropped down to 25.
Yeah, we talked to Hallis about that, but they don't speak the function.
So it's not like, it's not like that, so.
These were just suggestions that they've offered. And then we've talked a couple times about.
Yeah.
I'm unsure if any of these.
Yeah.
You know, we're going to do it, let's just do it right.
Yeah. For, for what, the $4,000 on a 30 mil, it's usually better than that.
You want, so if you decide to approve all of these, just make that stipulation.
That's my suggestion. I mean, because we certainly don't want to have to go back in there and dig everything up and replace the wall.
It would be everything.
I don't think you'd let you put 20 mil down. He thought that way.
And that's the thing, as we talked.
He's paid to do the thinking.
We'll ensure.
We know nothing.
Yeah, right.
But, you know, when we talked to them, I mean, that's what they put, they said they put down like 95% of the time, and only the 30 millimeter when the soil is really bad. And then after talking to Richard.
I like the 30, it's just more insurance for me. You know, I think that makes sense. I sleep better. I, I over-design sometimes, I know that. But it's, I'd rather do that than over-design if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you have any more questions?
Marc?
Yes.
Who, y'all talking about future concession stands and restrooms and stuff? Am I not correct that sewer line goes on the edge of the existing track? And making taps and stuff like that you need to get done? Where, it sure would activate a lot of people coming back, digging it back up to years or making connections.
Yeah, it goes right out. I know, or goes out, I've heard you talking about it.
And that's a part of the pre-con, is it's nice to have, you know, people have been here for a long time. You know, you know those hidden things. And then, things like that, which is, what they do is they pothole it here, they'll dig a hole slightly, and then they'll exactly locate it. And then, you know, if they're aware of it, then they're careful. If they don't know about it, and.
I do look at making connections and bringing them outside of track areas to, you know, while you're overlaying.
Is it a sanitary area or is it?
Yeah, sanitary area.
Yeah.
Two redprints.
Well, it has to flow down to there.
That would be, that would be the example of change order. You know, sanitary is a little more expensive in storms and more nasty, so it's.
Right.
Connections are secure.
It's money, but it would be a great asset that you talked about, maybe before you might just make your expenditure, you might look, put that in, that maybe, or though, like that.
Yeah. I do want to say that you asked about the alternates, the structural spray. You have a quantified number, let me vote it in tonight. And we start running into things, and there's like another $15,000 change order or something. We might have to. The sealed system is, basically, it's a sealer, it's a, it's a port on material. It's basic, it's very expensive, as you can see. So basically, they pave out the rubberized surface, and then they pour. So basically, they pave out the rubberized surface, and then they pour on the sealer, and then they put the structural spray on. That decision to do that can be delayed till the day it's done. So, May, May first or something, let's say, so we vote in the sealed track tonight, and then let's say you run into some issues, you can always do a deduct alternate, pull that sealer out. If that makes sense, so you can pull that thirty thousand back if you needed it for change orders or, or something. That could be a nice little insurance policy at least to cover that unknown.
In the health, yeah, but in the health bill, what is that with the six thousand and for the tennis event type of pair?
In original?
What are you talking about?
I'm on eight door.
Uh, that's, that's the offset. But I think here's the real pace, is what I understand, is that back to the call?
This one?
Yeah, if you look at this one right over here, it kinda confuses you.
Right, because this is after we negotiated. So you need to be looking at like four-two, what's that one you're looking at?
Their, their original bid was a hundred and thirty-four.
One eighty, one thirty-four, and then.
Yes.
Richard had in the proposals that he had ultimate number one, two, and three, and everyone bid on those.
I see it now.
After we selected the best value for the district, then you can negotiate with them. And we, in alternate number one, they had a cement line, and we did not want the cement line added, so, you know, we had him take that out. Then that's when we all, you know, they started talking to us about the value engineering and the upgrading the turf. Coach was, was really wanting us to do that. And those two things were kinda almost a wash. And then that's when they said that about the tennis course, that while they were out here, they could give us a lot better price. So, you know, that's how y'all have it here, and then if you have to know what you wanna accept, what about that you wanna accept.
What I was saying was that on this page, it was twenty-eight-five, and on this page it was, they were putting down six, but what they did was reduce it by six thousand.
Yes.
I see it now.
Discount.
Would you explain to everybody the difference between a sealed track and an untapped track?
Um, so a non-sealed track is, like I said, basically they took our rubber base map, it's called, and it's paved similar to like an asphalt paver. We'll pave asphalt to which is that, this machine, it's about this tall, and they put hot rubber and urethane in there, and it paves out a half an inch. And it's basically the traction, that's what you run on. And then the sealed system, then you pour that on top of that base map to seal it, so water cannot go through it. And basically what it does is it, it makes it a little stronger, and then it preserves your asphalt a little longer underneath this. If, if you don't put the sealer on, the water can go through the track and then flow slightly, you know, vertically downhill. And over thirty, twenty, thirty years, it pulls the oils out of asphalt, so the asphalt can start to chunk up. It's called where it starts to get gravelly, you know, you see it in springtime where gravel starts to break down from freeze thaw. So the sealer just helps protect that, so water can't get at the asphalt. And, and then it also, like I said, it makes it stronger as far as lasting longer. It's a little harder surface to run on, or firmer is another way to look at it, but, so it's, like I said, about thirty, thirty thousand dollars. And it usually allows the track to last a couple more years, so it's, it's a, it's a good investment as far as a high school track, it's, it's, you know, as far as the longevity you're looking for and stuff. The track will be, you can, what it does is, as it starts to wear out, where the track now, when it wears out, all they can do is cut and patch. This, this type of track, what you do is you come back and re-spray it, and just put a new coat on, a little similar, you could put a paint on a wall, and then you re-stripe it every five, six, seven years, depending how much use you have on it, so. It's a good system.
With the amount of wear that we see, high school level, is there, will we ever see that, that track being torn up by spikes?
Um, it will. Usually it depends on the, in the warranty, it tells you exactly the depth of your spikes, just so you don't have to really.
What's it, order age? Order age spikes, here we go.
And usually in the starting blocks, five, six years, you know, you see little bits of rubber.
I see them where the old guys are playing, and those kinds of things.
And then when you re-coat it, what they do is they re-patch those and then re-spray them, and then they just become invisible, so. It's, it's just like any surface, you know, this carpet is wearing out at the door, but in the corner, it's not.
And it's easy enough to get a, a pat to the top of it.
Oh, yes, sir. This is basically you just heating up urethane and rubber, and they're just filling it in, and it just seals right to the old material.
How often do you think we would need to do it, high school tracks?
Um, the warranty is for five years. Usually by year seven, we should probably re-coat it. Boy, Greenville would fifteen years, you know, it was just too long. But the seventh year, the nice thing is, with Greenville's problem is they didn't re-coat it, and then they had to throw it away. If you keep re-coating it and repainting, you know, similar to putting that coat of paint on, you preserve that for almost twenty years. If you can get re-coatings out, it'll hopefully be replaced. So it's, as long as you maintain it, it's a good investment. You know, like they, they, you know, they never had the money to, or didn't follow the maintenance procedures, and then there's nothing to do, you know, having to just pay it off and throw it away. Any more questions? Mike, you ready? I'm good, I'm good. Ready, ready, forward it.
I make the motion, we accept all the alternatives proposed on eight point four.
All right, Mr. Turner made a motion, need a second?
We'll have a second. Mike, Mike had it now.
Yeah, I don't think I'll second it.
Huh?
How's that, Mr. Taylor, second?
Well, if you're saying we ought to go to thirty or not.
Well, that's just.
Four thousand dollars. Is that, that's a good price, is that right? To go from twenty to thirty, about another four thousand.
I mean, that's just an insurance policy as far as, and I'm, I'm like Richard, and all of my engineering background, I kinda overdid stuff, so when I went home at night, I knew I had to lay down and sleep. And I didn't have to worry about it, so.
And before y'all go around, I did wanna tell you that there is not a contingency built in, there's no contingency built in here. So they said that usually five to seven percent. Sandra, what's that, seven percent?
It's about ninety thousand. Hopefully, we wouldn't have to use that, but we'd wanna do a repair if we needed.
Look, in my opinion, four thousand dollars is pretty good insurance policy.
Okay, I'll, I'll remember both of we go with the way that it's written, accept or change it to thirty, bills.
Thirty mill, set a plan.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Turner, you made a motion and amendment, need a second? You seconded, Mr. Taylor, all right, all right. Oh, in favor, raise your right hand. All hands raised, motion carries.
Unless I said I'll contact Halas and get their contracts and bonds going, and then I'll set up a pre-construction meeting, so if they call back, just say. And then if you can just let me know when you can let them have it, and when you want it done. This isn't like one of those shows on my wife watches where they tear the house apart, and thirty minutes later, it's just brand new.
We told, we were telling God.
Three months.
That's why we have the camera here.
I'm a mess, so.
Based on your experience and your, your expertise, what kind of timeline we're looking at?
It's usually around three months to do.
Without any bad weather days?
Yeah. And there's sort of bad weather thrown in there. You know, it's there, it's, it goes down to get out and off the site. They make more money when they're efficient and gone, so, you know, everyone's gonna wanna get going. It's a good time of year just because they have crew sitting, so.
Okay.
Thank you all for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
That, and, Mike, please, no, for Mike. Thanks, sir. That's a trip. Mike, from, from your point of view, if we change that out from the clay pile to a PVC pipe that will seal in on her, on her drain, how much money would we need to split it with him?
Well, we need to make it as fast as we can, so, you need to, at this end where they transfer from one type pipe to another, you need to buy a manhole and make your transition, and then go to the other end. There are tie-ins, there are tie-ins down through there.
Are you saying they have to come all the way across this parking lot? Is that what you said?
No, outside the gates, the football field right in there, right there.
So you're putting a manhole right there so that they don't have to?
Where you transition, where the plastic pipe, the clay pipe, you got a manhole. Of course, that's the two reasons, transition, a way of cleaning out the sewer system if you ever got a problem. If you've got how the field ice coming in, and in the future, you're gonna have, you got that restroom down at the far end that haven't been using, it's tapped into the side of it. You got the concession stands, it goes into it, so you've got connections that's down through there, really no, really no, but you just have to dig.
Will it cost four thousand dollars?
The other may figure it out.
I think maybe we should have that, maybe my doctor.
How deep do you think those pipes are?
About six foot, my manager, I can get it. Then you'd have to try to figure out where you want your future opening, and go ahead and make those, get them outside your work area, getting over the rat mark on them. If you ever, three miles from the concession stand, rest or a human, you have to.
I'm not gonna have any trucks to drive a little track.
We're not gonna need something else, I'm sorry.
We've also got water lines, I know about them, that football field area, so, maybe with that old vacuum sprinkler system, I don't remember, we never ran more than many years ago. That type stuff's right there.
Well, he talked about putting in some high-dut lines that were laying there and that we could connect wires and stuff like that. But I, I think the smart thing to do is, we don't.
That's at the other end of the field.
We don't easily dig anything up once we get a thing in.
Your water line, especially in the middle, right there where the control box was parked a lot of years ago. So that's gonna tell them then, they like to dig off there and go to fill houses or wherever they go, or restrooms, concession stands, almost a big lot of anomalies.
What's that line, what is?
I don't know what's that, but I've had it, I've tuned it, I remember it, it's a no vacuum irrigation system, what about it?
What's the, the sprinkler right now, it had an inch and a half?
Two.
Don't be surprised if you're gonna have auxiliary costs on a lot of that stuff, because there's no need in leaving that whole pipe underneath there, it's not, what grade pipe is, it's galvanized or something.
Wonder how deep that pipe is, they're gonna, they're gonna go down?
Well, it was about eighteen inches. Water line?
The, what they excavate the field.
I'm not sure, far as I know, we, I don't know how deep that water line is.
Two-inch water line, about eighteen inches deep.
Eighteen inches, I'm sorry.
I think that's twice. Any more comments, questions, concerns? And then we'll move back to our record agenda. Consider filing a record for January two thousand and fifteen.
Page one is the income expense reports. And I know, Laurie, you didn't call me. It looks a lot better. You got those touched. So, a good look at page two. You can see our financial statement. Overall, we've collected seventy-six point ninety-six percent of what we estimated, and we've spent thirty-nine point twenty-seven percent. Our expenditures were down about two hundred and thirty thousand from last year. And if there's no other questions on that, we're gonna move on. You've got your disbursements that are greater than ten thousand on page ten, I mean, page eight. The only one that I think is kind of maybe something you're not used to seeing in there is the bacterial athletics, and that's where we have the high jump and the long jump and all those kits refurbished. Because they were just really a piece of foam that just was rotten. It really wasn't a, what, they refurbished them and recovered them for that. Something that we would have needed to do for a while. So, then the page nine, structure disbursements. And if there's any questions, we'll answer those.
On the first page, page nine, about halfway down, Ken, sir? Uh, we're still.
Well, what I was told, why that second deal is as much as it is, nineteen hundred and twenty-eight, is because there was a wax and a stripper that was ordered. And I know our custodians prefer the stripper especially from Ken's. And, so, I'm not sure when it's coming, right at that time of the year, because they usually, wax and, I think some do some in Christmas, but the majority of that is done in summer. And known custodians are probably putting that where they can put their hands on it on June the first.
That's what, that's what.
Getting ready for it. I asked the same question, why do we have a bill that's so much more concerned? And, and we normally have deals from Ken's, but they just aren't that much, because there are certain products that they propose, and we're trying to get them for them.
Page ten, that page, page ten, what are we, what do we meant there? From page ten to about forty down.
Something that was for athletics, Laurie, do you remember, what do we, when did, why did we have to rent a vehicle?
Oh, was that for cross-country? I think that was cross-country, was it?
I think so. Yeah, I think that's what it was.
I had to say it was for cross-country.
I think it's cross-country.
They, they did meet with us, and the two expeditions were already going out. And that's a suburban that we rent there. From there, we used to do all of our rentals from, what's the place over in Mount, Mount Pleasant? And, and this is a lot, lot cheaper, and it's a, it's a bigger vehicle, the suburban, so they can usually get the luggage in there and, and have room for more, more kids. So you don't have to rent as many vehicles either.
On that, so, page eleven. I may be asking a dumb question, but I don't understand why we keep seeing some of these show up twice, like Architect's Mechanical, that's the same time it's showing up in. Is that, that's not a double page, is it, or what, what's happening there?
When we actually made our agreement with them, it was last November, so, trying to think when they came and did their first inspection. Ricky, do you remember?
January.
So that would've been the first time we were building?
Laurie, so, you saying there's two, it's been here two times?
Yeah, Architect's Mechanical.
Uh-huh. Are you talking about the, where it's listed four times, over on the right side?
No, it just, you know, it shows up twice, the same.
Where is it?
Oh, you know what, there are double pages in here. There are double pages in here, I have mine folded back.
Okay.
Uh, if you'll look at, um, thirteen through sixteen.
Yeah.
Then, those are double pages, some, I think the printer got jammed and...
See, there's Kim, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you'll just fold up pages thirteen through sixteen, it'll be right.
Okay.
But I, I have the same question, Maurice.
Yeah. Okay. Definitely know that up and I, I knew it had to be a reason, but I couldn't figure, I kept seeing it, I marked it.
I may have to tell y'all that, if you'll just follow thirteen through sixteen, that's a double print there.
Okay. Okay. I knew something that, that I couldn't, I just, I didn't have no sense figuring it out.
I would've been better if I just did mine, but...
That's what Mary says, when I see there's two charges to say.
I think one of the others, I had a question on him, I folded that up. Billy Craig, record service, on page fifteen.
And that's when the, we're working on the softball, the, we're working on the powder line. And, um, one of the big trucks messed up and I said that was our responsibility. People, we talked through that.
How did, how did that, we didn't, we didn't contract the, the, uh, general?
We're calling to talk to them and that's what Cheyenne uses, is it Cheyenne uses or, if I see it, uses?
Cheyenne. Not electric.
She said it was part of the contract.
It was.
Yeah, that shouldn't have been part of the contract, that. Did, did it say it in the contract that we were responsible for any?
We didn't actually have a contract. It was an agreement, but it did not say it in the quote, but it, it did not say that. She said that that's the way that always works, is what she's saying.
And she said that. It did say in there something about they weren't responsible if, um...
Torped, torped, or anything.
If the field was messed up and...
But, but we had to pay the five hundred dollars, which Cheyenne Electors wanted contracted the crane, wasn't it?
Yes. And we could've consulted our attorney, but then it would've break off the thousand dollars.
I think, I think we're gonna get smarter on who we're gonna hire next time.
It gets costly every time you do it, doesn't it? On page eighteen, Tire King. Who, who is Tire King?
Um, that's a tire company, out of Avenger, did those on-site, uh, work.
Said, yeah, real tire, on a bus and...
I had it highlighted and I questioned it then also, uh, I was told it was bus ten. And, um, I asked if, um, if that's done at Long Star, what the price difference is. I was told it's the same price, um, you know, I'll just have to verify it and I said, uh, that's true.
Well, this, this guy, this dude, Tire King, is he, is he certified?
He is.
Race?
I was giving a copy of his brake certification. I asked for it.
But you asked him for his certification on?
Well, I asked the certification department for it.
Yeah, he, he's certified on buses, bus brakes?
I'll have to go in there and look at it, see exactly what it said, but it was brake certification.
Okay. Y'all use the Long Star Loop?
And say it, uh, J P?
No, J P is a different one. Long Star Loop is also a tire place. They work for big trucks.
I'm not sure, I don't remember seeing that.
Yeah.
Long Star Loop?
Yeah.
Long Star Loop.
We, we do take, take them up there some, I don't know what, what do you...
Yeah, I think they have a mobile service too, don't they? I, I don't know.
Is J, J P, um...
Well, JP is one of the cadets.
That's JP Diesel y'all talking about, isn't it?
Okay, which one are you talking about?
Long Star Loop.
Oh, it's our loop.
Yeah.
It's a passenger tire.
Okay, we'll check on that.
Okay. Page twenty-two, three-quarter way down, Texas Filter Service. You know, I asked you about this not long ago, about why did the filter service, but what, what have we changed?
We, did we call them about that?
Um, it has not gone up. It has not gone up. We pulled all of the invoices and, uh, where's that?
Be there in eight fifty-five.
I see, uh, where is it?
Texas.
Is it Texas? Texas Filter Service, yeah.
It's on page twenty-two, three-quarter way down.
Well, um... I know, but I pulled some months and months, I mean, I pulled about two years of it and it had not gone up in a while anyway.
It's been being eight fifty-five. So what I've, that's what I've been seeing is eight fifty-five.
And you mean in the last few months, Maurice?
I didn't know, I didn't think we'd ate any time.
We haven't ate any time. I think she's kind of looked, just second. She pulled it there, so we looked at it and that part, she said she didn't think it was open, so she just opened it.
Do we have a contract with them to do filters?
Um, I don't have a contract, I'm just in a burger.
No, I don't have this, more than this month, this year's older, but this is last year's. See, it was two twenty-three seventy-five. This was two months ago here. This was three months ago. Two twenty-three seventy-five. This was two twenty-three seventy-five each. They were, if it was two twenty-three seventy-five, that's hard back there, that's like it down.
I may have looked at it wrong now, but all my good, it was eight fifty-five, for a long, for a good while, you know.
It might have been like, you know, at one time, but last year, all last year, it was two twenty-three seventy-five. And I, I'd have to go into the vault and get up, play a high...
There's no, there's no big, I just...
We actually pulled two, two, two prior years and it wasn't here.
Okay.
One thing is that, um, I think that maybe it was the way it was divided up. You know, it was just like that one, one month I showed you and it didn't, it was just divided up by three places. But it's a total and they just put it on those different budget codes. And I think that maybe at one time there might've been some other budget code too that they, Long Star, Long Star was in it. That's probably what it is. It was divided up differently then.
Yeah, the Long Star.
It was divided up five different ways instead of four.
Okay, okay. Okay. Any more questions on this parking?
I'm gonna go back to page eight and what, what exactly would Buck Terrell Athletic do?
Yeah, um, what they do is, is our, um, our pole vault and high jump, both pits needed some refurbishing. They, uh, had a lot of waterlogged, I guess that's probably the least I can say about it. About being in that little room over here, that little shed, so, um, last couple of years I've been, been trying to get those refurbished. We were thinking about just replacing the entire set, but that was the cheapest way to do it, just refurbishing. And, uh, they, what they did was they went and they, um, they took our foam and, uh, just resurfaced all of that and then gave us some other covers to cover them, uh, and, uh, what else did they do? Put our names on them, you know, just basically made it look brand new. But...
So they didn't do anything to the pit?
Yeah.
Cause it says, it says, it says pit on here and that's pretty long of things.
I, I guess there's that foam, you know.
No.
I don't know.
It's just cushions.
Is it called the foam chair?
Cushions. Ladies turn cushions.
Cushions or the pit.
They are...
Those ones were crated by the... You didn't want to see those.
That's about the way it reads.
Well, um, exactly. They, they, sometimes you can put them on crates, but it's not the best idea because they, when they brought them back in, uh, the guy told me the best thing to do is just put them on the ground or put them on a platform. Uh, the crates have those burrs and they'll cut, you know, cut holes in them, especially new ones. But the biggest problem we had was every time our kid would land on it, you'd see a big puff cloud of, of, of foam and, and the kids basically were jumping with their eyes closed on pole vault and high jump. So we just needed, it was something we could get done a long time ago. I think we were in there for about twelve, fifteen years without even getting the plate, so just trying to upgrade, you know, upgrade or something like that.
I just want my shirt on the pit.
No, for the, thank you.
Okay, any more questions on the disbursements? If not, I need a motion.
Okay, motion.
So, Al, Alcorn, make a motion, Mr. Corners, second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All hands raised, motion carries. Okay. Consent out of number six. Means of regular meeting on January twelfth, two thousand fifteen, special meeting on January twenty-second, January twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen. You might see anything or... Not, I need a motion. I'm not a motion, I'm... We have, of course, that's presented. Alcorn, make a motion, Mr. Skipper, in a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All hands raised, motion carries. Number seven, administrative records.
Um, we have a card of thanks from AC Royal for flowers sent, I believe it was for those that passed away, is that correct?
Probably.
Now, I have a book.
Probably.
Okay.
Okay.
And, um, at your place, I put, uh, dates for the board. Um, you can look through that. Um, you can see the most important thing on that page is our testing, that's why it's in red. And you can see that there's a lot of it coming up, um, in March and April, but that's what we're, uh, really concentrating on at this time. Uh, I must say, this has been an interesting week. And being superintendent has all the fun out of the snow day. Because, you know, I'm getting, uh, trying to get out this information as quickly, uh, you know, as we can and trying to make the right decision. You know, it's kind of hard to predict the weather. But, um, I have some good contacts in the other, um, um, schools, uh, I always contact. We go back and forth between Heasprings and Puget and Pittsburgh and we get information from Mount Pleasant, so we'll kind of compare the conditions, um, in each, uh, district. So, with, uh, two snow days and two late start days, it, it's been interesting. The Chamber of Congress banquet is Saturday night and, um, there will be, among other things, they'll be honoring the educators of the year and they're listed there for you, so, um, if you can come out Saturday night, I'm sure they'd like to have you there. And, uh, that's basically all I have on that.
Okay. I'm asking, I make one, consider approval in two thousand fifteen, sixteen district county. Looks like they've got it all figured out. Any problems with this floor that you know of, or everything worked out good?
Um, the plot's...
On the calendar.
Calendar, okay, Martha was in charge of the calendar, why can't we let us speak to that?
I hope everything works out, did you get it in your little machine there? And it was correct?
Yes.
Every year I do it, she has to put it into her whatever, in the computer, and then they say it's okay, so it's good to go. We do have our two, um, makeup days this year because of the snow and stuff, we'll be making up on June first and June second. Our, be our two makeup days. Here I got it for, uh, May thirty-first and June first will be our two makeup days.
There were two double days that I didn't understand, but, uh, that means kids get out, uh, early release and then the staff stays for a full day of training.
So it counts as a double day, training day and a school day.
Yeah, they stay till six o'clock in there, right?
Seven, seven, seven o'clock. And the D E I C committee has already approved it.
Great, okay. Looks good, a lot of good color.
Thank you. I have my color in there.
I make a motion, we accept the, uh, two thousand fifteen, sixteen coming.
Mr. Stern, we made a motion. Page three, make a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All hands raised, motion carries. All right. Any other questions?
Everybody here is in a close session now.
Uh, we need to do eight two with the resource officer.
Regarding to resource officer.
And, uh, Martha also, um, is preparing that grant, so you want to speak on that?
I've already, uh, this is just a resolution that you know I've prepared the grant and you're giving me permission, although I've already submitted it. Because I have to do things already because I'm afraid of, but it was submitted already and it's just permission saying that you know I'm submitting the grant for the resource officer. And this resolution has to be submitted to the, uh, five tomorrow.
Now, that meeting is gonna be after spring break, you said?
The meeting will be after spring break, now that's gonna be a different meeting, this is just for me to be able to write the grant. The meeting we're talking about and we'll have to have is for us to form our own police department. And that'll be in the next meeting, I'll have that resolution ready for you.
Okay, eight two, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve, uh, Martha's made, to submit the grant.
Good, Mr. Stern, we made a motion, need a second?
Second.
Mr. Rowan, you made a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. I don't know. Six ayes, one no.
Laurie, would you rate, would you rate your one?
Sure.
Would this grant cover the whole cost of it?
Yes, the grant is for... It's for fifty thousand three hundred and thirty dollars from fifteen ninety, it's a little bit, it is, um...
I don't even say it how much.
No, never would. And, uh, how much?
You don't even know how much it is.
Fifty thousand three hundred and thirty nine dollars.
This, this is just to, uh, write the grant?
Yes, this is just to write the grant.
Now, you know how much it is, but we, we've already thought of it.
Miguel, if she, uh, I mean, to do the resource officer, you'll have to agree to it. And at that time, then we would have the figures for you, telling you what it would cost us and, and if she gives the grant, how much the grant is and how much...
I under, I understand that, but, you know, if, if, if the board was, if the board was gonna reject the grant, the board shouldn't have applied for the grant to start with, or the district shouldn't have applied for the grant to start with, because you're knocking other agencies out of this money that would accept the grant, so... I just, we just didn't have the, we needed a dollar amount when we voted, so...
Now what? Maybe I'll tell me that again?
If, if the board, Lisa, did you just not say that the board would do one?
Well, I mean, we won't, we won't hire, I mean, we won't hire him as the school resource officer, as a school employee without the board approving it. This is just giving her approval to go ahead and slide for the grant, so...
That's all this is giving us.
Then it would come back to us.
Yeah, it'll come back to y'all and...
And you can say, well, we don't even...
And you can say, well, we don't even, what he's saying is that if we decide we didn't want a resource officer, we tied up the grant.
Exactly.
Now, if, if we said no, we're not...
But we had already decided that we were going to keep the resource officer and so this just gives us an option to...
You're, you're, you're tying up, if you reject the grant, you, you, you tied up the entire process.
Now, if we rejected it, it would go to the next one. It wouldn't be tied up, would it?
I've been involved in these, in these grants, in these, these same kind of grants for a long time and you tie up the process.
But we can already discuss, um, that we wanted a resource.
I just didn't have a dollar amount, so I didn't feel comfortable voting, yeah, so... Six ahs, one note. Motion carries. Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're in motion. Close session, call excuse please. Congratulations, administrators. Do your toppings, Miss Ford.
I do have a couple of things. Uh, one thing is, uh, regular board meeting is scheduled for Monday, March the sixteenth, and that's your weekend for spring break. And it takes us several days to get this package together. And, um, it would really be better for the office if we could move it from the sixteenth to the twenty-third. Does anybody have a problem with that? It's on Monday. It's just the following Monday.
Yeah.
And since this one is a week later anyway, we don't have two weeks in there with spring break, you know, so it would work out better. And also, um, you passed a resolution, uh, for us to talk to, um, the financing company, government capital, uh, for the eight, eight hundred thousand. And Lisa and I have talked about it and we're going to feel a lot more comfortable if we increase that to nine hundred thousand, uh, especially along some of the things that you heard tonight. But it's going to take a resolution to do that, so we're going to have to have a short meeting sometime and the sooner the better. Uh, when you're looking at what it's going to mean to us, the difference in volume in eight hundred thousand or nine hundred thousand, uh, over five years' time is twenty-two thousand a year. So it's not a whole lot more each year, but it gives us some breathing room, so we can put that contingency, um, in there just in case something comes up that we don't feel comfortable taking out of fund balance. So is there a time point at least for it we could meet? Next week? It could even be a new meeting if that would work better for people or just whenever we...
I might be able to Tuesday during, if y'all meet during the day.
Like noon?
I might be able to Tuesday, there's another meeting here during the day that I need to be at, so...
What time will it be?
Um...
I, I know, I know, I'd get out of class at eleven o'clock, too, then thirty or twelve.
All right.
I know what you want to do.
You want to be working, Neil?
I will.
What about you, God?
Okay.
Uh, Cheyenne is, uh, third, March the third.
Yeah, that's the same day that meeting and it's here.
You got a little need.
But he thinks he'll be here.
It's at twelve, isn't it?
So eleven, would that work for you?
Yeah.
Oh, Jerry, is it?
I'm a little bit tired.
Eleven thirty. Eleven thirty, eleven thirty?
Eleven thirty.
Okay, let's say eleven, um, does that give us time to post it? It is, okay, eleven thirty?
Be five of us.
Okay, that's eleven thirty on Cheyenne the third.
And all you have is resolutions, what you plan on?
That's, that's it. And that's all I had as far as future topics.
Okay. Anybody got any?
I don't know the cars.
Okay.
Basketball playoff game.
College one?
Oh.
Five then. Tomorrow night, eight o'clock, Silver Springs, depending weather.
Is the weather supposed to be a problem?
It's changed. It's, it's saying maybe snow today is the one.
You're not serious?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be more snow.
Get up early.
Supposed to be ice.
So we'll be working on that tomorrow, I'm sure all may.
But it'd be... I think our snow days we took were good calls.
It'd be at eight o'clock tomorrow night at Silver Springs.
Bad weather.
Who, who we playing?
Yeah, we didn't have a choice.
White right.
White right.
There's a game prior to our...
Are the boys intimidated? They are.
I don't, no, I don't think, I, they just didn't play there. I think it's just one of those ones, I hope they got out of their system. Sometimes it's...
I heard the dad boys were intimidated.
Yeah.
Well, Tiger.
No. I don't think that was...
Tiger never intimidated.
Natchez didn't make their shut their head. I just know what my two told me.
No. Well, it may have, but I...
My son's got to play the team that beat them twice.
Well, they said that they're six-seven, six-nine, they weigh two fifteen, two thirty-five.
Okay. Oh, you're talking about the, the next game. I thought you were talking about the one we just finished. Now, this next game, yes, they do have some kids that are pretty tall.
Well, you know, is that little five-two guy that puts on a couple of times?
A high kid.
Two fifty, he'd have to go to those classes in the cafeteria.
We'll be okay. Playin' will be okay.
Don't say that, coach.
We don't have a choice. They had good practice this morning. I didn't see them this afternoon, but they're, they seem to be okay and ready to play.
I hope so.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate y'all coming out tonight and when y'all want to make a motion, y'all make a motion.
I'll make a motion with you.
Maurice made it out.
I'll get motion.
All right.
I'll probably get it. Hey, some friends had a few new things over there. They...